Order, start my standing for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Roll call please, Angie. Okay. Mitch, want to take roll call, please?
Sure.
You know how to do it. Bush, here. Dunn.
Here.
Eisner?
Here.
Lindsey?
Here.
Steffes?
Here.
Sullivan?
Here.
Chambers?
Here.
Uh, would anybody try to entertain a motion to approve the minutes?
I'm going to approve both meetings, minutes, regular and special.
Anybody like to second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion on minutes?
Can we make the motion down?
Yeah.
Second by Sullivan?
Uh, we'll take roll call on that, please. Recall the question, please. Dunn?
Yes.
Eisner?
Yes.
Lindsey?
Yes.
Steffes?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bush?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Uh, communications, we'll start with, uh, the clerk would like to make a statement. Dr. Lindsey?
Thank you. Um, I'll be reviewing some of the board policies at this moment. Sadly, in this time of COVID, we've become divided. We should be united in our efforts to provide a safe environment for our kids and community. As a board member has said, this will go away. But I'm fearful that we'll be left with the scars, the hurt feelings, and the commentary that's not been helpful. Words once spoken cannot be retracted. As your board clerk, I want to review policies. Policy 161 states, if an individual member receives a complaint, they are required to refer the matter to the district administrator. Policy 165-1 states, no member may use confidential district records. On three occasions now, I have witnessed the personnel being discussed in open meetings, and on one occasion, the board actually threatened. Further, policy 173 states, all personnel issues must be discussed in closed meetings. I personally have been lied to, verbally attacked, and misrepresented. It will be difficult for all of us to forget and forgive these events. I urge the board to follow our school mission policy, which I will summarize, is policy 110. In essence, we are to seek excellence in education. We must look beyond today and realize this all will pass. We need to come together in the midst of this COVID crisis with our common shared goal. This is pointer pride. Thank you.
Thank you, Doc. Uh, we're going to board communications received. Would you be able to start there?
I did have a couple of parents reach out to me on your comments from last meeting, last one, the next meeting, about, about comments to our school nurse. Did you mean they all have to come through you?
Um, no.
I don't think that's fair.
No, no, no. What I meant was, let me clarify this, actually. Um, what I, what I meant to clarify is Jane is following, I'll speak to the camera. Jane is following guidelines given to her by the school and the board and the county. If they want to scream at somebody that they don't like it, then they can call me. That's what I meant. If they want to have, if they want to complain and yell at somebody for being mad at somebody, they can do that to me. If they have questions, then they can contact Jane or Mitch or somebody else.
Yeah, I don't think you want that all up.
No, absolutely not. No, if they just want to yell at somebody, then that's fine. They can call me.
Okay.
No, that's what I meant by that.
And also, I have an email, a couple of phone calls requesting that we seriously consider going back to five days a week. And I had a couple of emails about, uh, why we did not consider virtual learning, especially Thursday, Friday of last week. I can address that right now if you'd like.
Yeah, absolutely, because I had a couple too, Mitch.
Materials, uh, equipment, uh, technology was not, would not have been distributed to students. They'd have been in school Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday was a whole virtual day. And then Thursday, Friday were the two weather days, so that students had been bringing back some of the hotspots and some of the Chromebooks and those kinds of things, they'd been bringing them back to school based on our current situation. So to switch to virtual, students wouldn't have had the technology they would have needed to be able to jump on and be virtual on those students.
I mean, some of the comments I received, we, we were shut down three months last year. Um, the hybrid plan was, was what it was the first semester of this year. And, uh, every day going forward is so important for these kids.
And a message has gone out to all staff members that any, any bad weather day moving forward will automatically be a virtual day. So now that staff know and can be prepared, students can get the equipment they need to have so that they can make that switch from Wednesday night to Thursday morning, just like that. Understood? Thank you.
I had the individual come up to me Saturday, and I don't know who the person was from Ethica, but wanted to thank the board and the administration for allowing them the opportunity to be here. So I'm just passing that along. We did receive a couple of emails thanking us, which I appreciate the thanks, the people thanking and reaching out. I got some, oh, sorry, go ahead, Angie.
I received a couple along the lines, and then a local parent reached out and he just wanted to let me know that they thought that you referenced Matt and thinking, um, did an excellent job on Saturday. Don't get mad. I don't want to put words in their mouth. I'm speaking for myself.
Mr. Austin didn't have the best day, but he made the best of it.
Matt too, Matt too. I heard about Matt too all day. But just passed on that, um, did an excellent job keeping people, attempting to keep people distanced and masked and addressed a lot of the concerns that we raised prior to our vote. So I appreciate that, and I appreciate that parent reaching out and letting us know.
I don't have anything unique that hasn't already, that the sentiment hasn't already been shared.
Yep, same. I got a few thank yous from resident parents of the event, went well. And, uh, a few emails in favor of keeping the schedule as is, and then one email wanting to go five days a week.
Okay. I had one that's a little bit different from all those. I had a parent, uh, asked me about players attending the games, uh, if they're not playing. So the JV players, teammates, to be able to possibly attend the games and cheer on their, their teammates. I did have a parent contact me and said I would mention that tonight. Um, so I guess we don't really have that on discussion, but.
No, neither. WIA allows only tickets for the 22 roster spot.
And that's, it's a WIA rule?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. It's the same rule that they had for the sectional last year.
Thank you.
Are you talking about a varsity, a regular varsity game?
I, it was very, it said tournament time, so.
Okay.
Yeah, so I guess if it's a tournament that's WIA, then, then yes.
Regular varsity game, regular season, they stay.
Yeah, yeah. Regular season, they were allowed there.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. Um, citizen communications, do we have, did we have anybody sign up? I don't.
No.
So, okay. Uh, Mitch, did you receive any emails about anybody liking, uh, wishing to speak tonight?
I did not.
Okay.
I would like to speak regarding the school board's consideration of returning to the five-day in-person instructional model.
Please introduce yourself.
My name is Jasmine Cool, and I'm currently a junior and have been a virtual student since the start of second semester. I've gotten straight A's my entire school career, and to be honest, I've never been closer to my GPA slipping. My mental health has been suffering, and my stress levels have been through the roof because I constantly feel like I have piles of homework and assignments. It's gotten to the point where taking a 30-minute nap feels, makes me feel guilty because I'm wasting valuable time. Don't get me wrong, I would love to be back in school. I love to learn, and I value my education to the highest degree. But quite frankly, in-person learning is not feasible right now. There is currently little to no social distancing, and there are plenty of students being way too lenient with the mask mandates to make it safe to be in the building. Virtual learning is difficult, but it is necessary for my health and the health of my family. I can barely keep up with it as it is four days a week. And I'm relying on Wednesdays to catch up. When people refer to Wednesdays as a day off, it just means one day we don't have to sit in uncomfortable chairs and stare at computers all day. Today, my back hurts a little less and I have a smaller headache. This does not mean we're doing nothing. This is not a vacation day. I have music lessons, extracurricular activities, projects, and many other general homework assignments. Going five days a week would be detrimental. I'm holding on to the cliff edge with my fingertips, and adding that day would be stomping on my hand. Thank you.
Thank you, Jasmine. Uh, is there any more?
Has she, has she made herself available to school counseling? I, I just would reach out to her, and I don't mean that in any negative way. I just wonder if that's something that might help Jasmine. Uh, we all hit bad patches in our life. I just wonder if we've made the school counselor available to Jasmine also.
Noted, Doc. Thank you. If there's any more citizen communications, please raise your hand icon. Okay. I have no more as well, or, all right, we'll go into the items for information and discussion. Uh, HSR update, please.
Um, this was attached to the board book today. Tim was unable to make tonight's meeting. Okay, so basically, Tim provided, uh, some information for us here. Progress during the month of January, they've installed gym equipment. They've been continuing to paint walls and ceilings. They're starting the installation of wall tile, installation mechanical and electrical finishes. Schedule four, and what you see on the screen for the board members, you see into the gymnasium as it stood a couple of weeks ago. Scheduled for February, install wood gym floor, continue painting walls, ceilings, continue install wall and floor finishes, and continue installing the wall tile and finishes. Today was an onsite visit. Mike Burgas from HSR was onsite. Roger and I toured the construction area. The cement floor is now, the wood floor is in. They were actually, basement floor was actually in, uh, sanding the floor in preparations for staining it and sealing it this week. They're, they are hopeful to have the gym floor completed by Friday and this week. In the library area, in the picture on the left, you're upstairs kind of on the main entrance, coming in off the north parking lot, looking back down into the library. They have not started installation. There's one light fixture, a rather larger light fixture that will need to go into the library. And once that's installed, they will begin putting in the carpet flooring in the library section of this opening. Uh, the picture on the right is upstairs on the catwalk. You can see the skylight, and right now the skylight still has a tarp over it. They're hopeful that beginning in March, they'll start putting in the glass panels that will replace the, the tarps there. And once they're done with that, then they'll follow out with the flooring out that main street area. So there's been a lot of, a lot of progress that has been made. You can see again, another picture of the gym floor, uh, mechanical room off of the gym. And then this picture on the right, you're now down in the library, looking to the west. And this little bump out area on the screen, I apologize for those at home, but this little bump out area, they're starting to put some tiles in this area, some ceramic tiles. So they're already starting to get some of the finished wall, uh, product put in place as well. And in the library, there's another larger section. They've got probably a third of that wall already tiled as they're moving forward. Again, just a couple of, uh, nobody's here in this picture. Roger and I, so, so far, where are they? Uh, February is month 11 out of an 18-month project. So they believe that they're 61% complete. May is projected finished time for that first phase. So they, they plan to be out of the addition and have all of the permits signed off and owner occupancy in May of this school year for that addition. For budget tracking purposes, Tim always references 274,000, almost 200, oh, 274,500 has been spent in the contingency. That contingency cost is 2.59% of the construction cost. Uh, every time he talks about, he also talks about the rock, the soil conditions, how much rock they had to pull out for the original. And then when they put in the water main for the sprinkler system, they had more rock that they had to deal with, remove. That's all in here. Accepted alternate bids for the cafeteria windows and the safety glazing was another 43,000. In the current pricing, there is that $13,000 reduction for the changeover in the steel railing and the mesh that was used. So overall, construction, month 11 of 18, 61% completed. As of the most construction payment application, we've spent about 59% of the construction budget. So relatively close to where are we in the process and how much have we spent to get to this point in time? I would say that we're in pretty good shape. And kind of a, this reference, this is the wall I was referencing. Right now, it has probably a third of that tile already installed on it when Roger and I were down there today. So I know they, they've got another project that Tim is involved in, so that, he was at another board meeting tonight. And that's why I was unable to attend here. But I can certainly make him, you know, reach out to him again to be available at our next board meeting and try to get him, get him back again for the March meeting. If there's any questions you have for HSR, I'd be glad to pass them along.
Just one question on the addition, Mitch, you plan on using that in May then, when it's complete? Uh, for, for the rest of this school year, whatever's left in summer school possibly?
Um, no. Because just about every wall, and, and I hate to say it this way, the older portion of the building, every wall basically is going to be moved in some way, shape, or form. And we need to move things, move items out of those classrooms. So we hope to move them into the addition for the storage. Some, we plan on having summer school up in this building. So, and, and we're, my hope is that we run summer school as we have in the past. But it'll just be in this location so that we can use classrooms and whatever. And then we'll stay out of their way during the summer construction when they're in the old section of building and getting at the foundation and moving the walls and things like that.
Mitch, um, Mitch, isn't it my understanding that you have to have a state inspection and an okay before you can enter and utilize a certain space?
Yes, yes. They're hopeful that all those permits will be taken care of in May. And we would, we would kind of need that to be able to move our people and possessions in there. So that's why we're hoping first part of May, that can take place so that when we need to move items out, uh, there could probably be, you know, two weeks of school left. So we would be moving items out of the existing building into the addition or store so that they can complete this summer project.
Has there been any additional talk to getting a jump start on Phase Two in spaces? Um, I think maybe the, the lunchroom cafeteria area was targeted as a, a jumps, kind of a jump start space?
Yes. They would like to come in the week of spring break and begin doing some work, and would like to take over that area until completed. Um, I know Mr. Renwick's been involved in some of those conversations. And, uh, Mr. Hangwall, since it's his classroom, we'll need to kind of talk about that. There are some other, other components that would have to go in. They need to cut a hole in the wall from the hallway in through a storage room so that there is a way to get into the cafeteria for serving. But they would seal off with plastic and everything, everything from the current gym into the, into the kitchen so that we could file students in and out of there. So we need to really investigate, is that feasible for us to do while it's still occupied or not? But yeah, we, you know, anything we can do to help them get us the keys at September 1st is certainly approach what we're willing to take.
So no decision's been made yet?
No decision has been made yet on, on to turn it all completely over to them for the remainder of the school year, come March, come spring break.
Sure, one of the challenges would be if we go to five days, we'd have the kids eating in the lunchroom again? Just give teachers that time back, because it's currently in the classroom.
Matt, you're probably not the speaker.
Oh, sure. It would, we're now at four days, so we were able to have lunch in the classrooms because we have a whole day on, Wednesday is through prep and they kind of make up that prep time. If we go to five days, we'd have the kids go back into the lunchroom. So that's the, that's the challenge.
All right, any more questions on the HSR update? Not, let's move on to the school board election timeline, please, Mitch.
We have two declared candidates for the three seats. But where does that bring us? That brings us to potential for write-ins. If someone comes forward and expresses a desire to be a write-in candidate between now and the time we usually have the candidate forum, we would invite them to that forum as, as a write-in candidate. If nobody steps forward, then any write-in candidate, any name is, is open, can be considered a write-in candidate. According to the law, write-in candidates' votes are counted first. Am I saying that correct, Angie? I know you had seen, showed me that language as well. If there, if there were three seats available and there are three write-in candidates, those three votes are counted in the election. Even if, even if somebody voted for the three write-in candidates and the two listed candidates on the ballot, the three write-in candidates are the ones whose votes are counted.
And I, I think most of the, um, voting places have machines that will prevent you from voting for more than three people. I know Iowa County is that way, that they're all the newer machines, and they will not allow you to vote for. So the scenario was, is if someone voted for four, wrote in two people, and also voted for the two that are registered candidates. You would have to count the two write-ins first. And since it was instructed to vote for no more than three, the two that are on the ballot would be not counted at all. But the write-ins all have to be counted. But I don't think the machines are going to let you vote for more than, than three. We have a blank ballot, so that's the issue here because there's not three people to vote for. That's why the issue comes in. So all write-in candidates will be voting for us, or I mean, will be counted in the candidates.
So then whoever the top write-in vote getter is, and it could be with as few as one vote, you go to that individual and ask them if they're willing to serve on the school. And if they say no, then it comes back to the process we've used a couple of times to fill a vacant seat.
It does not go to the second place.
So if one write-in gets 10 votes and the second-place write-in got five votes, if the first-place candidate says, "I'm not interested," legally, you don't go to the second-place candidate. We come back to, okay, we have an open board seat. Anybody interested applies to the school board? We have them come meet, and the school board members would select the next board member to fill that seventh chair.
And this is all because you have a blank ballot. You only have two people running for three seats.
And legally, if there's four votes on a ballot and it says only vote for the three, it's not thrown out. Not a disqualified ballot.
It is not a disqualified ballot.
Even if you think the machines, you think the machines will let them, people that are.
I, yeah, that's what we've been told.
Yeah. As much money as a machine costs, they better be.
No, it's not.
So if there is, if you know of somebody considering it, thinking about being a write-in, I would encourage them to come to school, fill out the paperwork. We can invite them to the candidate forum, at least let the community members know.
They have up until Friday before, it's a good Friday, the Friday before the election to register as a write-in. That doesn't get them on the ballot.
Right.
But they would then be a, known as a registered write-in.
Okay, any more questions on the election timeline?
Nothing like muddying the waters a little bit more.
All right, let's go on to the budget comparison, please.
Uh, shared with you, uh, budget from January, at this point in time last year of 2020, we had used 47.27, 47 and a quarter percent of our total budget as of January 20th, of 20, sorry. And this year, so far through January of '21, we've used 45%. So again, a little bit bigger budget, a little bit lower percentage. So I would say that, that it's pretty close in dollar amount of what has been spent out compare, you know, comparing budget year to budget year. So we're basically kind of right on kind of a same cycle that we have been on in the past.
Any questions on the budget comparison? None. Okay, let's move on to the senior and junior prom.
I know Mr. Austin had cheered kind of with the board prior to a meeting of talking about some plans, and I just asked him to kind of update you on where that is right now.
So, uh, we did talk after the last board meeting. I kind of talked with the advisors. The goal is to do both proms this spring, not do them at the same time because we're concerned on what the numbers might look like at that time, if we have to limit attendance and stuff. So right now, the senior prom will be on April 17th. The junior prom would be two weeks later, that was May 1st. Uh, right now, we're looking at only allowing juniors and seniors to come to those proms because of the attendance numbers. Now we're talking 120 kids already, uh, with their dates, obviously, and whatnot. If the numbers are not great at that time, then we would just limit it to that class. So it'd be just the senior class who gets to come to their prom, the junior class come to their prom. So right now, we're looking at, we're going to limit the attendance to some degree. Uh, and then we're going to continue to put safety protocols together. So the mask wear and things like that that we can control. Uh, we find it really important, though, that we do give the seniors a prom after last year. Obviously, they didn't get theirs last, last year, so we're working on that. They would get theirs April 17th, and then two weeks later, we do the junior one. Then next year, we'd be caught back up, so where we should be. Um, we worked out this year with the scheduling of athletic events, that we have those couple of weekends open right now. So we should be able to get them both in, obviously pending number and what's happening at that time. We'll work on the safety protocols over the next month or so, to share it with you at the next one. I don't know if there's any questions about that. I just kind of want to give you the heads up. We are working on it, so people that are listening to this, we're working on it, we're not, we're not, and forget about the senior class. We're just trying to get us, everybody, the best possible scenario. we're working on it, we're not, we're not, and forget about the senior class, we're just trying to get us everybody the best possible scenario.
Any questions for Mr. Austin on that?
Prom's a good idea. I'd rather see it both of them happen this year than one of them in the fall.
And the more we talked about it, we were looking at dates in the fall and it just, with, if everything goes normal, which we really hope for obviously with sports and stuff, it's just not going to work out with those dates because of how things lay out and whatnot. So this spring seems to, seems to work with those couple of weekends and hopefully we can move forward with that. So excited for those kids.
Thank you.
Thank you, man. With that, we'll move into the action items. First on the agenda is discussion of possible action on moving to a traditional five-day in-person schedule.
So I was asked to make sure that this was on tonight's agenda. So here it is for board discussion and decision-making.
So is there a recommendation from, or from the administrators?
We did not have an admin meeting prior to tonight. I would say that while, while each building would, would follow the decision that the school board has made, I know that there are, there are some, some arguments made as to why keeping Wednesdays as-is for a few more weeks would be very beneficial for our students. But there is, there is an understanding that at some point in time, we need to make that switch back to, back to five days.
And the main reason that we did that was to get the struggling student population somewhat caught up. Have we done that, Matt?
I believe the last number I shared with Mitch, that he sent out to you was at the high school level, and this is at the high school level, that we have, at the start of this, we had twenty-seven students with a not getting credit in at least one class. Twenty of those twenty-seven have gotten credit back in at least one of those classes. And I think it's up to thirty-one classes now that we've got kids credit back in.
Sure, sure.
So there are still some on that list that we're still working really hard with.
I understand.
We've worked really hard with a couple of them. But we've, we've done, and the kids have done an amazing job coming in and getting worked up.
When we had this discussion in January, we talked about ways, even if students weren't in person, to make Wednesday a day that furthered their education. Could you speak a little bit to how that effort has gone?
I can. So one of the things that I've done after we had that conversation in January, we actually created at the high school level again, we have a document that shows what each Wednesday looks like for assignments, things that they've given out first. There's days where there's an ACT thing, there's days where there's this, and there's enrichments out there. I can certainly share that with you if you would like, or I could share it with Mitch, I guess. But it's a document, and if you look at it, every class is basically getting something assigned in in English. They might have their reading day, they might have to work on a paper. Science, they may have to study for this test, or there might be a study session that they could join in, or they may have to just do this worksheet to review for this, or to further the next step, or watch an head puzzle, which is a video that's got questions in it. So if, if you want my honest opinion, kids are busy on Wednesdays. There is some work because we hand out paper things for that Wednesday. There is some work they can get done early on. So if they choose to work on that Wednesday assignment that, if I'm the science teacher and I hand out on Tuesday, I said, I want you to do this on Wednesday, they may choose to do it Tuesday night. So there's some of that I'm sure that's going on too, but I know from what I've talked with kids and I try to check in with quite a few of them, they're telling me Wednesdays are pretty busy. There's a lot of work given. The virtual students, I've heard it's a nice change of pace. Instead of being on a computer on Wednesday for six hours, it's a good change of pace to this style of learning. We're really focused on those 21st century skills. We're looking at independence, we're looking at problem solving, communication, huge thing. Media technology literacy, things like that, which I think are really benefiting our kids and the law.
Vicky, could you speak to the middle school experience on Wednesdays?
Sure. Right now, our, our sixth graders are staffs meeting with their homerooms and using it as more like a study hall to answer questions for the kids. Some are pushing out some assignments. Seventh and eighth grade teachers, they're, they're pushing out assignments related to the curriculum. Also, you know, the, the virtual aspect of Wednesdays are really important to touch base with our virtual students. I know that's the one thing when I talked to my staff this last week, that's the one thing they brought up, that it's, it's hard to reach out to the virtual students when you have your twenty kids in a classroom. And so they're trying to do some one-on-one with the virtual students. As far as kids making up work, we've had some kids that have been knocking some Fs off and getting them back up for passing. So far, we have fifteen students who have increased their grades and we, we still have a lot of them that are, are working towards that and are, and are close, that are coming in on Wednesdays.
And we apply special ed at the high school too as well.
So I asked all of my staff and all of them gave me the same answer. They'd like to stay at four days a week. This is some of their reasons. We have many students receiving extra support, some at the middle school and high school working on credit recovery, others working to find a balance and stay caught up now, others are receiving interventions and their special ed services on Wednesdays. It allows for collaborative teacher prep, so grade level co-teaching and department meetings. It allows for intervention planning, so we're having a lot more meetings to do responsive interventions based upon what we're seeing in this, based on student needs. It allows us the ability to connect one-to-one with students who are 100% virtual. And then I just added that personally, I'm in favor of staying four days a week. From special ed and pupil services standpoint, it allows us to make connections with students who are 100% virtual and to provide a wider array of supports on Wednesdays when other students are not in the building. And I, personally, I, I see teachers using their time on Wednesdays. There's a lot of collaborative planning going on. And then I think it's important that we give teachers that time so that when they're planning across grade levels, the, the level is similar regardless of what method of instruction our students are receiving. They're all receiving the same thing, whether they're in person or virtual. And if we go back to five days a week, I really worry that that virtual is going to slide and they're not going to be receiving equal. So that was kind of the summary for myself.
Can I add one more thing for the high school here too? We are, even though at semester, yes, we have struggling students, everyone did new grades go up. Ones that are struggling now, so I wrote, run a weekly grade report, those kids are coming in as well. Alright, so it's not like we just stopped for the semester kid. We're bringing kids that, that they're struggling in third quarter. We're bringing them in, teachers can work one-on-one with them, prep for all the virtual stuff. So that is another added benefit.
Yeah, I would echo what the other three said here is, each grade level looks a little different, but we, each teacher's providing some structure, some work for those days and learning. Trying to make it authentic and, you know, provide some voice and choice for kids. I give out an example, I think you're, you all do. And some teachers produce some pretty cool things. You know, I, I just link some digital content they could explore and I want to repeat whatever else that I gotta say for my own kids. It's just, and I, and I think you heard it from Jasmine too, they're just, we're still going through a pandemic and it, there's this mental health and stress that's still a part of what's going on. I, I do believe, not just from a virtual academic side of having some negative impact, I think emotional, social impact as well. We might see that more so from the kids and from the staff. But I've been happy with what I've seen on Wednesdays and appreciate having this time.
So it sounds like they both recommend staying with four days a week. What about you two, Mitch and Vicky?
The feeling that I got from my staff and myself, I, I recommend staying for the four days a week, but obviously I'm going to respect the decision that the board makes.
I have a little thought. My staff are very much for four days. Yeah, it takes a lot of time to change things from paper-based and whatnot to electronic-based or too virtual for those kids. And it's a great time to connect with them. You do have office hours at the high school level on those afternoons and, you know, you get your work in the morning and you can check in with the teacher. And I know there's a lot of kids that are utilizing that.
We, we have a couple of eighth grade students that are very high-level academic and they're, they're both virtual and they've expressed how nice it is to be able to connect with their teachers on Wednesdays.
I took the time today to reach out to some teachers because I wanted to get their input on how they felt. I spoke with one elementary teacher and three high school teachers. All three high school teachers said the same thing. And I'll go back to the last meeting where I said, I wanted to make sure we got these other children that had fell behind caught up and then we'll discuss it at the February meeting. Now the February meeting is here and we've got a lot of kids that have switched over to virtual. And I was told twenty-seven more today have switched over. And I respect that. I understand why they did it. I, I respect them doing it. The teachers that I, that I spoke to had, were pleading that we, this is just high, I didn't speak to any middle school teachers, just the high school teachers were pleading that we stay the same way that we are right now. And I look at it and it's like, they didn't ask, the teachers did not ask to be put in this scenario. We as a board, myself, as a board member, you know, we sat here and said that we want people to have the right to be virtual, alright? We respect that right. We want them to do that. Now that being said, the teachers didn't ask to have this phone on their lap. One of the teachers said that last Wednesday, she didn't even get to her teacher prep time until two o'clock because she spends the rest of the time with her virtual students. So that being said, I am, I'm not going to sit here and turn my back on 100% of the teachers that I spoke with, which is only three, but I guarantee there's more that feel the same way. And I'm not going to turn my back on them or the students or the families that have decided to go virtual. The elementary teacher that I talked to thought that could probably go back five days a week, but said that, you know, that could be fifty-fifty, you never know. I understand they've got virtual, we've got interns down there for the virtual, so we're not comparing really apples to apples when we compare the elementary to the high school. And that's not a slap in the face to their teachers. That's just the reality of the situation.
Gary, I, I appreciate your comments and, and taking time to reach out to some teachers. One of the things that's going through my mind is at some point, we do need to get back to five days and, and when, when is that or what metric are we using? I mean, the, the school, the, our report card is, is pretty good. I think seven, is that right Mitch?
That's, that's the last.
Feeling, feeling like we are, we are in a better position in that regard than we have been in a while. We've got students who are pretty well caught up, but I agree in the few conversations I had with some folks who work at the, at the various buildings, it's the same thing. You know, we still need those Wednesdays. So I'd just like to entertain a conversation about that timeline or, and maybe it's not a timeline. Maybe we don't have a date in mind, but what gets us to that point?
I'd like to speak to that, Joni. I mean, in, in my mind, going from four days a week to five days a week really has nothing to do with where the cases are right now. In my mind, the, the key to Wednesdays being the way they are is to support our virtual learning experience. And I think as long as this district is allowing a 100% virtual option to our students, I think we need to maintain Wednesdays to be open to, to focus at least maybe a little more of, of our attention on that virtual experience that may be getting less attention than it should the other four days of the week. And I, so I think the bigger conversation is how long should we offer 100% virtual option for students? And I'm, I'm not sure we're ready to have that conversation, given the amount of students that are going virtual right now and the, and, you know, Jasmine's testament of why she was staying virtual. And, and everyone has different reasons, whether it's extracurricular or, you know, health concerns or, or whatever. And I'm not going to say we have to have 100% virtual option forever. But I think as long as we do have that in place, I think having the four day a week in person set up and allowing a Wednesday to give those in-class students some, some flexibility and independent learning time, but also allow the virtuals some better touches with the teachers so that they have a richer educational experience on par with our in-person kids. I think that's really the, the crux of where I'm sitting on it for me.
So in, in that, looking at it through that lens, and that's a really good, a really good way to think about this. I feel like we have committed to a virtual experience, 100% virtual experience either through the end of this school year or the end of the pandemic, whichever comes first. Not saying that going into next year, if we're still officially in a pandemic, that we have to have 100% virtual option. But I feel like we are far enough down this path that we can't, we can't decide that we're going to turn that option off until the end of this school year, based on the, the way we present it or the posture we've held as a school up to this point.
I think it's unfair to, to, to assume that no one wants to be back five days a week, you know? Because clearly, students that are in school four days a week, I think a lot of them want to go back five days. I think a lot of parents want all their kids back in school five days a week. You know, I, I, I get that feedback and that sentiment. But I, I think that, that that is really outweighed by the uniqueness of the school year, the, the stress we're putting on just the whole teaching staff and administration trying to balance two educational platforms. And I just, you know, and, and the nearly universal recommendation from administration that we continue the status quo sells it for me. So that, that's where I'm at.
Doc, Lindsay, you had something to say?
Yeah, I, I would support what Aaron said. The other thing I would point out is just less than an hour away in Madison, they're still not in school. So what we've accomplished at this little school is keeping the majority of kids in school, and we fail to praise ourselves of what's being done. I think the teachers have clearly indicated that they need that extra day for virtual learning. The teachers to me have a unwanted burden here of this, to technology, and I think they've stepped up to the plate. So I would support the status quo and perhaps revisit after spring break.
That would be, that would be about the fourth, nine weeks, if you were, if you were to look at, at something like that. That'd be the last quarter of the school year.
I have a, I kind of have a little bit of question. Gary kind of touched on this, but one of my children actually said this. He said, well, the virtual kids have their own teacher, right, with the interns? So Matt, can you explain, I mean, do you have a reason why the elementary school shouldn't or couldn't or wouldn't order something that go back five days a week?
Yeah, there are some staff, you know, I don't know how many, there's only a couple on the first survey I did, that did say, you can see both sides, especially the young kids, bring them back five days. And I did observe all four of the interns on Zoom. They're doing a wonderful job. You know, they're still, you know, a month into their new career.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
And that's the thing I, a little concerned about. They're doing a good job, but that, that time they get to meet with the regular faculty, that's a big advantage for them that they can, if curriculum's all new to them. So they'll talk with them, how do you teach this? And just make them happy and just, that kind of thing is just, is very much appreciated. But yeah, I need to see for the young ones, it's having them five days is an advantage.
Matt, can you refresh which grades are getting taught, which virtual grades are being taught by interns?
Second, third, fourth and fifth. We felt like, kind of from the beginning, we wanted to, especially the 4K, the K, and then first, keeping them with, you know, more veteran teachers, just, they're the youngest and it's just hard to teach them good stuff. Having the interns at the upper grades was, made sense.
Are there any grades that, zero virtual students?
No, every grade has at least four or five. I think I'd have to check.
Okay.
Do we have numbers, total number of virtual right now in the elementary or middle and high school?
Not on the campus.
I know it changed recently there, like Gary said.
Right now, it's about a third of the high school.
Okay.
Roughly somewhere in there.
Yeah.
Not that high. Probably like 12%. Again, a lot of the athletes, athletes have decided to go virtual.
Yep. Yeah, and that's. And that's.
Well, it's 10% more.
Okay. What would be the possibility of splitting it up? Could I go back five days for that elementary, stay in virtual for the middle high school? I think it warrants discussion.
Absolutely.
I think it does. The buses, the buses are going to run, the buses, some buses are running on Wednesday. So that's, that's not anything outlandish that couldn't be accomplished. And what that would do. What they would do for you Mitch is in case we, we get another polar vortex and for some reason, virtual learning can't take place for a day or two. We're pushed up against the calendar with the elementary school kids anyhow. And this, this school could have a couple of additional days at the end of the school year if they had to. Yeah, we could. I'm sure. I know the argument's going to come.
I understand.
No, I'm not, I'm not the staff on the road. You know, I'm not done with the staff. I'm done with, you're taking my babysitter away from me. If my, if my five-year-old's going to stay at home, I need my middle school student or my high school student to stay home. I mean, because I do hear some of those things from time to time when we have tried to separate. But you're right that this, this level needs more hours of instruction, you know, on a regular basis. And kindergarten, first grade, there's only so many projects they can do on their own on any given Wednesday. Absolutely. And I think, I think the staff support is more down at the elementary school to go back to five days. And I, and I would support that myself. Otherwise, I'd have to go no against staying at four days.
What are the pros and cons here? Can we outweigh these in the discussion right now? I mean, plus, we're having a, having a discussion, who has pros? Obviously, we know some pros to this, right? Anybody want to start listing?
Are you talking district-wide or are you talking?
I'm talking, I'm talking more of the elementary school in five.
And the staff members I talked to, the biggest, the biggest thing is collaboration with the interns.
Kind of like what Matt was saying.
They are, I mean.
They're green.
It would be like having a student teacher and getting them to know that. Is they do spend most of their meeting Wednesday morning, meeting and collaborating with those teachers. And I mean, I just tried to contact a few before I came here and I couldn't reach any of them at quarter to six because they were all still at school, which I don't think is abnormal. And now we would be asking them to meet with these interns outside of school hours as well to prepare them. Because we do owe it to the, the virtual students to get the same experience.
That was feedback I have had from staff. The last time I polled them, 90%, 90% wanted to stay four days. That was a month or so ago. I think it's probably changed a little bit. That is one of the feedback is that there's more than normal planning that's happening beyond the school time because of the dual nature of whoever we have right now. Even though we have faculty teaching kindergarten first and 4K, there's still that additional need to do more collaboration with the teaching, to modernize. Something that just the, you know, the workflow is at higher issue.
Do you feel like the challenge of virtual learning for the younger kids, like the pre-K, the 4K through first grade? Would you say that, I don't know how to phrase this, but I mean, would it be less of an issue to? Or would it be, would it be easier to manage these virtual kids? If we brought the in-person kids from four days to five days at the 4K through first grade levels?
Okay. 51.
51 virtual in elementary?
Yeah, that's, that's more like 16%.
Okay. Yep.
So you're wondering, just is it easier to manage?
Would it be, would it be less of a problem? You know, I mean, I, I think at the, at the higher educational, at the higher grades, and I think these virtual kids need, need that touch on Wednesday. And it's a lot more intense curriculum necessarily. But I mean, at the, at the 4K first grade level, would you say that the virtual curriculum is a little different in a way that you don't lose as much by maybe taking away that Wednesday virtual? Or how would you assess that?
I think that would be fair. I don't want to speak to the teachers though. I just observed it. And they make it look easy, but they do a really good job. And I, I don't know if I could say for sure. It's more like keeping them engaged online.
Right.
And it's just again, is that cognitive, mental, emotional challenge to just keep it up? And that's, that's the harder part. The planning part, I think you just say with the content and things like that, that's, that's easier. I think that maybe they'll just start engaging inside.
I guess, are you, another way of asking it is, are you, at that 4K first grade level, are you aware of valuable time happening with the virtual students on Wednesdays? That doesn't necessarily happen Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday?
Are you, are you just saying, could we eliminate Wednesdays for those two for virtual?
I'm exploring that.
Essentially, that's what I, that's.
Because I think, I think the pro, I think the pro of in-person learning for these younger kids is higher.
Than a virtual day for four or five-year-olds?
You've got the value of early childhood and the importance of reading and writing there.
And you say 4K in the entire grade?
Yeah.
So 4K has never come on Wednesday? So I don't think we'd start bringing them on Wednesday in a year of a pandemic when our normal 4K in a normal year doesn't come on Wednesday.
Okay.
Our 4K is coming exactly what they always come.
Okay, fair enough. I missed that. So we would be kindergarten, first grade, basically.
Yep.
So I mean, I think you get the benefits of early childhood. I think that it's harder for kids that young to handle a digital platform necessarily without, you know, help at home.
I don't know if we're going to draw more kids. I think the virtual kids are going to stay virtual.
Right, right.
But what you're saying is you'd get those kids that are going in person right now, four days a week. Would come five days, those other virtual kids would have a day off essentially on Wednesday. Essentially.
I don't know what they would do. I mean, would we just treat it like any other virtual day?
I think you would treat it like any other virtual day, you know?
And I guess what I need to know is, is that such a bad thing? Or is they, are they, is the Wednesday such a unique day for these virtual kids that they're really losing out on some kind of experience?
I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt. But on Wednesdays, our encore teachers are meeting with the virtual students. So that's when our virtual students get Fied and music or technology and art because our teachers are teaching the other four days. So the only time they get to connect with an encore teacher is on Wednesday. If they don't come back, if we were teaching on Wednesday, I feel our virtual kid would lose out on that. And then I also think our virtual kids join their peers, like the in-person people on Wednesday, so that they still get to stay connected with their class in other ways too. But I think we would lose out on encores. I don't think Mr. David and Ms. Ringwell and Ms. Uppano would be able to teach encores if we have other students in the building five days a week. So all of those specials are virtual kids we no longer get.
But if we just had the younger kids in school, the earliest grades in school, wouldn't our encore teachers still be able to do the virtual learning activities on Wednesdays?
That those kids would then need the specials on a Wednesday?
Okay.
We want our kids in school and not have the encore relaxed classes running?
Is it, is it possible for the in-person kids on Wednesdays to not have specials in person? To have the specials teachers?
So then our teachers don't get any break while they're on?
Okay, yeah, that's, I need to understand this.
But if they are, if they are there, I mean, explain to me, doesn't each class go to a different special each day? Like the whole grade doesn't go to?
Correct.
So they would have two periods of class?
Not on Wednesday. We'd only have one. Because I'm assuming we would go back to two o'clock. It's not a PLC time.
Yeah, so they would have one class to teach.
They only have one special or live skill.
I don't know that that's not workable to also get the virtual experience and teach one.
So, so why two o'clock? If, if we were looking at, at middle school and high school remaining virtual on Wednesdays, the buses are going to run for, primarily for the elementary school students. So what if instead of, what if encores did not happen for in-student, in-person students on Wednesdays? And we shortened the day to one o'clock or to whatever is necessary to make sure that all the kids have an opportunity to eat lunch? And then teachers would not have a break, but their day would be shortened then by two full hours? And then that time, that, that extra hour that they have would allow for the additional collaboration and planning?
You're talking just.
Elementary school is what I think.
The whole elementary.
Well, possibly. I'm just, it's just an idea.
Somewhere in the middle. I would lean towards twelve, I guess.
I mean, I'm, I'm sitting here, we've talked about the report card score Mitch. So what's at a seven? What can it go to? What's the highest number it will go to? 10. Go ahead. Eight, nine, I think is where you, or nine, nine, 10 is where you look at on the report card recommendation is. Everybody back every day, full on.
I understand.
Seven, eight is, or it's, seven, eight talks about bringing more people back and moving to more inclusive in the buildings.
But to Aaron's point, it's not really about the, the social distancing measures anymore as it's much, as much about, about providing that quality opportunity for the kids who are virtual. I don't know. I'm just.
For this year, I agree with you. I think the virtual option will, will be there. And it wouldn't surprise me, there will be a virtual option possibly from here. It very well could happen from here on out. I wouldn't object to that either. Things are changing. The world is changing.
I hope that C.C. has an option if that is.
Technology is changing and we gotta, there will be a school that will do it. And it's going to be so popular that you'll have a mass, mass exodus from schools that are not going to do it. And then all schools will be forced to do it, if you follow me there. Yeah, I do. The difficult part is, is, is the conversation's been going on. And my wife had to do it in a kindergarten classroom where she had her classroom students and then there were two students that were online. And I've never seen her come home more exhausted ever than trying to do, teach in both platforms at the same time. If that were going to be the case, then, then I would recommend that you're going to want, instead of an intern, you're going to have a full-time teacher who is going to be dedicated to the virtual learning opportunity. So that for the students that want to be in the building, you have somebody that can be dedicated to them and give them the attention that they need on that one-on-one. And the same thing for that virtual student. That will be very tough in a district, I would say of our size where it might be six kids. We may have to adapt to that style of learning. And, but at some point, five days a week is, is normal. And we all talk about getting back to normal. And, and all the reasons are warranted what I'm hearing here. But I believe at this point, the elementary school couldn't go back to five days a week and leave the virtual kids with the interns that Matt's talking about there. That's, that's, that's what I would support tonight. And I would say if you're, if you're thinking about altering what a Wednesday, you know, instead of a normal two o'clock release on Wednesday, allow me to check with the bus company and make sure that the drivers would be available for a noon or a one o'clock or something, you know? Based on that. They don't have to start Wednesday of this week or, you don't have to start Wednesday of next week. But, but we should really look, look at that.
I have not talked to all the staff on this and I, you know, and it's kind of an idea. I think if we had enough time, what you're suggesting, if we had enough time to kind of mentally prepare as well as collaboratively prepare, it would be an easier transition.
Could we, could we kind of say, hey, can we have a plan?
Just this week?
Oh, no.
So what if, what if we thought about meeting two weeks from tonight to hear a plan and proposal and make a vote at that time with the thought of implementing potentially, you know, a week or so after that? I don't, I could pull up a calendar and see what candidates we're looking at then, but.
That would.
Potentially a March 1st.
I would say that would give me, I have a staff being scheduled next Tuesday. That gives me time to get input from them and what they all think. Just some feedback, I think that would be appreciated.
I'm okay with that, Matt.
Yeah, I would prefer that we, that we change gears a quarter, if at all, into the quarter.
When is the, is the quarter, end of, end of March then?
Yes, 19th to the 26th. You're certain Friday, May, March 12th is the end of the third nine weeks.
When is the next one?
So the quarter changes before spring break.
Right.
Don't we have enough time to talk at our next board meeting about that possibility?
They could definitely have a plan. That gives them a month to have a plan to possibly look over and then maybe change out the quarter, you know?
So our board meeting would be March 8th?
The next meeting.
That gives them a week to.
A month.
Or a week to. They have a month from tonight.
To plan.
With a decision on March.
And then it's two, yeah, sorry, a week, I started.
A week from our decision.
Yeah.
To implement, so.
But if you're, if you're working on, if everybody's working on a plan for the fourth quarter, there's plenty of time to have a plan in place prior to the March 8th board meeting. So a decision on March 8th would impact a week to March 15th.
I'll make the motion that we stay status quo through the end of the quarter, third quarter.
Maybe like stick to that motion?
Are we going to mention the intent to move to five days with the elementary school?
I mean, I'd be in favor of putting it on the agenda for the March 8th board meeting.
That way, I mean, it says that they have, you know, if they've got the plan, at least they're, they're working because we said, hey, you know, let's get it. Kind of thing that we were kind of getting at, Larry.
I'll second it with that added on.
With what, putting it on the March 8th?
Does everyone think that's a sufficient?
What was the motion? I'm sorry.
Okay, so.
Stay status quo to the end of the quarter.
With the, with the, it being revisited at the March 8th regular board meeting?
That's what I got.
Okay, so revisited.
With plans for the fourth quarter we discussed at the March 8th regular board.
So is that targeting elementary school or is that targeting?
That's a good question.
I would say, I would hear, I would hear any proposals.
Depending on the numbers, you know, we don't know. Depending on who's back in person and maybe we're bound to, it's a virtual.
Yeah, I think just bringing this very topic.
But I would expect a lot of high school kids to be back because they know they want to be back.
Yep.
Right.
So I would like it, I would like it if your motion, Doc, included an emphasis on the elementary during the five days during the fourth quarter.
Well, I mean, I, I think the.
That does kind of give the parents time to prepare them to, if they need.
I think it's clear there's a strong leaning amongst everybody here for that. Is that give the administrators enough direction that that's what we would like to see on March 8th? Is a plan for five days on March 15th?
In five days, like normal or what are you talking about?
We want to hear a proposal as to what you think five days could look like and still meet the needs of our virtual students. Yep.
Yeah, that's, that's.
Matt, indeed, is that, that's enough time to have something. I think there's a strong leaning there. Maybe what I intend to go five days.
All right, we've got a motion in a second. Any more discussion?
So the motion I have is to stay status quo to the end of the quarter, which is March 12th. And to put this on the March 8th board.
Yes.
Good.
Call the question, please.
Done?
Yes.
Hi, sir?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Capa?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bush?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Motion passes. On to number two, approval of the 2021, 2022 school calendar.
I sent a copy of proposed calendar. I sent a copy of proposed calendar to the board members. As I stated, it is a when I say standard calendar, if we go back a few years, starting September first, ending June third, as kind of all the traditional, a week of spring break, Thanksgiving, Christmas breaks, has the professional development days and workdays built into the calendar. It is a hundred and ninety-day calendar. So no, starting before September one, but legally, we can start on September one. I did share with the board some thoughts too about depending on where the building project is, potentially looking at maybe starting that elementary school after after Labor Day weekend. Depending on what construction is, how soon will the teachers be able to get back into their classrooms to get rooms prepared to bring students back? So some of that will depend on what happens this summer, what the foundation looks like. But this was a mixture of elementary, middle and high school staff members that that sat in and looked at this and reviewed it. They're they're in favor and strongly encourage this this calendar for your approval tonight for next school year.
I will make the motion to approve the calendar.
I'll second. A question. Help me see where are there any snow days built into the schedule to allow us to meet the?
Yes, there are, and it's hours of instruction. That a few years back, that it used to be, you had to have so many hours of instructions and so many days. With the length of our day and the number of days that we have face-to-face, we have some snow days built into this calendar. They're just not indicated to say, oh, you get this day, this day, and this day could be a snow day. But it's based on the amount of hours of instruction. So I mean, if we had a lot of two-hour late starts and early releases that could add up to a couple of eight-hour days, that limits the number of full snow days that we could take. So some of it depends upon what the weather does to us during the course of the year.
Oh, sure. But I mean, I guess what I'm asking is how many snow days does this calendar allow us in while still finishing on time?
We have a hundred and seventy-seven this year.
Yeah, so we would have four days that we could use as snow days. Okay. My recommendation moving forward, a lot of schools, when we first started talking about the virtual learning piece, it first came up last year and we kind of ran a test day on on the ACT exam, not knowing a few weeks later, that's what we would be in. A lot of school districts have said, we know, if we know that they're talking about bad weather coming up on Friday, those school districts were sending things home on Thursday night. Take this hotspot, take this Chromebook, make sure you have this thing. Because if we have a snow day tomorrow, it will be a virtual day. And that was, that's the position I would like us to be in moving forward so that if we know if we have one more snow day, which is where we are this year, that's why I sent this information out to the staff yesterday, our next snow day has to be a virtual day. So you need to make sure that you're planning and preparing your students for that possibility. So if we have a a blizzard or the polar vortex sticks around and we have wind chills below negative thirty and we take a day off from school, we're not coming to the building, but we're, instruction is happening. You will be, you'll be instructing virtually. And we can build those kinds of things into every calendar moving forward that if we get to that point where we've used all of our snow days that are built in, this next day will have to be a virtual day.
Okay, let me ask you a question. So I I think you remember you said earlier, you you didn't want to take away the fun of a snow day from the kids, you know, so I get that. But let's say let's say the very first snow day of the next calendar year, the next school year. Let's say the very first snow day we know is coming like three days ahead of time. There's, everyone's talking about it, that we're going to get ten inches, it's going to be horrible. Everyone knows it's going to be bad. It's not unexpected. Are you planning on making that a virtual day because it's expected and the forecast allows you to plan for it, even though we have snow days to give?
My answer to that question is no. I would I would not, I would not do that. I get emails from the National Weather Service that give me, hey, you know, this is what, this is what looks like it's coming in. So I I give information ahead of time that would allow me to say this is what they're calling for on Thursday of this week. So Wednesday, we need to make sure that we are preparing students for the possibility of a virtual on Thursday. So I I get that more than it's Wednesday morning and guess what? We're we're in the middle of getting six inches of snow right now. So there, I I believe I am given enough advanced information to help make those decisions as we move forward, instead of saying, all right, I'm gonna we're gonna have to take the first one virtual because I don't know if we're gonna have one or six or ten. So we're just gonna make sure we take all the first ones that way. So in that, hey, six inches is coming tomorrow, I I would allow that day to be the snow day. Go out and enjoy it, have fun, be a kid. If we get to day five, we're not taking day five. Day five is going to be a virtual.
Yeah, got it.
Good.
Are most schools on a hundred and seventy-seven, a hundred and seventy-seven day calendar for school days?
That's pretty typical, yes.
And it used to be one hundred and eighty?
That was the requirement, one hundred and eighty or and the hours. We have more than enough hours with a hundred and seventy-seven and it builds in some professional development and and work days in our in our calendar. So, yeah, a lot of school districts are now some school districts, you know, build a hundred and seventy-eight day calendar and only gave two snow days. One of the districts I used to work in as a teacher, that was a case. You had, you had a hundred and seventy-eight face-to-face days, two snow days after that, then it was kind of the first, the next one, the teachers made up, the next one, everybody made up, the next one, the teachers had to make, you know, so it was schedules like that. So, yeah, it's it's a pretty standard calendar.
And we'll go back to the elementary school and September first start date. If the school's not ready to move into, how how will you, I mean, that's not part of the calendar, of course. The calendar will have to be revisited for the elementary school or how will you handle that?
The 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 number of hours that the preschool through fifth grade have to or required to meet is less than the middle school, high school.
By how many do you know, Mitch?
Oh, it's eleven thirty-seven here and I think it's a thousand. So almost a hundred hours difference. Okay. So that that gives us several days to to give and take. You know, we, and again, we don't necessarily want to plan for the minimum, but you know, there'll be a lot, a lot of meetings that are going to happen over the summer, you know, once they dig into that foundation of where are we? How bad is it? I'm hoping, how good is it? They can tell me how good this is and where they are. But again, they're they're pushing to try to get us into school as close to that September first date as possible. And that's why, because of the hours required for middle school, high school, I would, we would like to stick with that September one start date. And we have some wiggle room on that, on the middle, on the elementary school, sorry. So I I would certainly, you know, be coming to the school board, making information available to parents as to how the progress is coming along prior to September, so that so that everybody's aware of what's going on.
I mean, we would give trouble if they were to be a month late, of course.
Yeah.
With construction for some unforeseen reasons.
Then we would be looking at trying to set up a new gym, get some dividers, make classrooms there, the library, make classrooms, wherever we can find an open space, we would be maybe, if if it was going to be, we can't get in anywhere until their projected date of October, yeah, then we would be making alternate arrangements to get kids in and get them in face-to-face.
Mr. Austin, are you still planning on doing exams prior to Christmas? Where are they going to be? I see that workday, January fourteenth, I'm assuming is the end of the second quarter.
Yep.
Will exams be that weekday or are they?
That is something that I'm going to talk with Ice and Staff.
Okay.
We potentially are still making, looking at doing exams right before Christmas break and maybe come back and use for that couple of weeks. The difficult part is obviously, if we were to shift everything before Christmas, our first semester is like a full week and a half shorter than the second semester. So that's where we were, we were looking at that. We had talked about that originally. Hey, let's just end the quarter or end the semester. Christmas is kind of a nice break. But the problem is, then those semester-long classes, they're lopsided. They're two weeks longer in the spring than they are in the fall. So we left the semester alone. We may do, we may do exams before Christmas. We'll talk about that as a staff.
All right, is there any more on the school calendar?
We usually talk a lot about spring break. There hasn't been no discussion about eliminating spring break with your staff.
Most, most staff members like a break.
I know, I understand.
You know why I like the fact that we're going after Memorial Day and like June third is because we can go to Mount Olympus with the eighth graders. I live for that. No, seriously, we we can't do those field trips because they don't open until after Memorial Day. So.
Is there any, we're on the calendar, but I'm on some of the calendars this year with with pandemic and and the recommendation not to go anywhere. Is there any concern about a spring break this year? With staff or students? I'm just asking absolutely a general question.
It it came up at a, one of the Iowa County meetings and Iowa County Health had sent out a recommendation that if schools are having a spring break, that they might want to consider a virtual option coming back from spring break to kind of kind of buy that self-quarantine window. Some school districts are contemplating it, others are like, we're just planning on when when spring break's over, we're planning on bringing our students back. We're asking everybody to be safe and make good decisions and things, but but it has been brought up at the Cully.
Will you be asking your staff if they travel to Florida to quarantine for two weeks when you're back?
I may. And teach virtually. They might have to teach virtually and and stream into their own classrooms here. It may be something we have to consider to try to make sure, I mean, I I don't believe any staff member would have both vaccinations. My hope is that every staff member might have their first one by that time, you know, if we kind of get to that March window and and there's enough vaccines available for them to go into the educators and and teaching staff and, you know, to at least get a first round and that everybody would have that opportunity. But, yeah, I don't know that anybody would be in the mood to say, yeah, I've had both my vaccines and I protect. So, I mean, there'll be conversations we'll need to have.
Sure.
I didn't know if we're still asking them questions or or not. I guess I moved out to Dr. Dunn.
You know, are we asking teachers questions or?
Yeah, about traveling like that in the other state.
Well, I mean, currently, travel guidelines in Wisconsin are not to leave the country. And if you come back from another state within the United States, that you do not have to self-quarantine, but you have to self-monitor. You have to, you know, be on the lookout for temperatures and COVID symptoms and and report them as soon as they show up. So that's the current guidelines. But I don't know if that's going to change with any kind of spikes in a variant strain or or a second wave of cases might come in the spring. Who knows?
Okay, we've got a motion in a second on the board to approve the calendar for next year. Is there any more?
I I just have a question. So first semester eighty-five days, second semester ninety-two. That's, that seems significant or that seems like a big change?
That's usually at the.
Is it? Usually that? Okay, so that's kind of the norm.
Balance as you can and sometimes the name.
Okay.
And they talked about the testing that goes on second semester.
Yep.
Okay, so that's.
With state testing, we wanted to keep the calendar up.
Okay. Thank you. That was my other question.
Did I hear you right that first semester is going to end after Christmas break?
That's when it usually ends. The last two years it has not because of the early stuff. We could start a week a week earlier or two weeks earlier, we'd be able to end at Christmas time, but usually it ends after, in the middle of January, next, probably in the last.
Prior to the building project, semesters always end after Christmas break.
Okay.
Okay, if there's nothing else. Angie?
I want you to approve that this. Paulson?
Yes.
Bush?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Heisman?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Kepa?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Motion passes. Number three, the facility used by the youth teams.
This was brought up at the last board meeting to put it on for as an action tonight. And I, I know some groups have reached out. School groups wanting to continue to use the facilities after practice. I don't, or after after high school teams and so on and so forth. I don't know how many other groups have reached out to any board members to express an interest or desire. In in conversations here, we've talked about really trying to keep it limited to Middle Point students, if at all possible. On Wednesday evenings, they do run the UV light through the gym. And with the size of the gym, if they're doing it to the best of ability, there's multiple sets with the UV light. Prior to games, they are scrubbing the floor and using the electrostatic spray on the bleachers prior to home games. So they they need the practices to to round up a little earlier than they might like to, the night before they would play. But then they pull the bleachers out and try to get through and disinfect all of the bleachers prior to fans coming in. So those are things that we'd like to still can continue to see happen, especially while we're talking about tournament season for both boys and girls basketball. Gymnastics is going to be in their tournaments. Wrestling will be leaving this Friday for some successful trip to Wausau, and again, in a couple of weeks. So we just kind of want to try to make sure that our our students have the abilities and opportunities that we hope they'll be able to take. So I don't know what direction the board would like to go or what what you're hearing from any community members or club teams or anything.
Did you think, Mitch, after the winter sports season, does does the gym slow down?
No, we have middle school volleyball in the spring because that was moved from the fall to the spring. So that'll be most of the month of March, first couple of weeks in April. And then spring sports season will start April nineteenth. And usually baseball, softball will be in the gym using the batting cage, but depending upon the weather, sometimes they won't necessarily be in the gym. So the the one sport that we will have in March here would be middle school volleyball. And of course, if basketball teams will continue to advance in the in the tournament, like especially the boys. So.
To to answer, in a normal year, once, once the boys state tournament is done, then there is kind of a, there is kind of a lull in the in the gym use. Softball, baseball, golf, might get in there and do a few things, but once there's grass, golf ball outside, cold or warm, and once it's good enough to get on the diamonds, softball, baseball outside. So, yeah, there usually is a dwindling down of the demand to get into the gym. But, yeah, with the middle school volleyball, a move from fall to spring, that'll, it'll at least be a seventh grade team and an eighth grade team that'll be using that facility on a nightly basis.
I don't, I don't mind entertaining the possibility of letting these youth teams use the facilities if there's space available and time available. And if it does not compromise the district's ability to create safe spaces for fans.
Great.
I mean, you know, disinfectant time that Mitch just described. So it seems to make sense to me that we kind of keep it as is through the end of the winter sports teams completing their training and and competitions. But, you know, what do you, what do you think about after the winter sports are done and and for the spring?
Yeah, that we've, you know, we've always had precedent of the Middle Point School District sports teams, middle school, high school, having a preference for practice. I don't have a problem with the, with the youth teams coming in. I think it needs to be just for practice. I don't think that there should be any outside competitions being held in the gym. Just let our our youth programs use it as a practice. Just let our youth programs use it as a practice facility.
Starting when?
Well, I'd like to get through the tournament series here for basketball.
Do you want us to say at your discretion or?
I'm going to pick my date here real quick.
So yeah, instead of picking the exact date, we just, you know, let Mickey.
Because if somebody's out early, I mean, you don't know if there's an upset or a winning streak. You know, to put a date down would be a little bit tough.
Right.
I think you're better off to say at the discretion.
Absolutely, I think we leave it at that.
And it's no secret that Mineral Point kids are traveling to other communities to practice.
Right.
And I don't mind having, you know, a few other community kids. They take advantage of it.
Yeah.
And we're cleaning anyhow.
And volleyball, middle school volleyball, you know, they'll be done with practice at a decent time and even when they have a match, they'll be done at a decent time or somebody else can come in after that.
I'll make a motion to allow it to be used by youth using it by the Mineral Point Athletic Director's discretion.
I'll second it.
We've got a third meeting. All right.
I kind of like the empower better.
Now you've got a little bit of both. There you go.
Let's, is there any more discussion on this? If not, we'll call the question please, Angie?
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bush?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Heizner?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Capa?
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes. Number four, purchase of additional Chromebooks for the middle school and high school.
So this is going to be an odd request because it's really for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. It's part of Dependable Solutions budget request. But like we went through this year trying to get our Chromebook purchase fulfilled, they are saying that if we can get them a PO, they can get us on a list to get ordered now. They're hearing from their suppliers, the sooner you can get a PO to us, the more likely you already have those pieces of equipment by the start of the next school year. We checked with the auditor, is this doable to actually write a PO for the next budget cycle at this point in time? And they said it is doable. And Dependable had said even to write on the PO that you are not to be billed until July one. So that puts us in our next fiscal year anyway, but we would, I'm asking for the authority to purchase, it's a forty thousand dollar purchase, it's a budget item that is in next year's tech budget as well. So it's not like eighty thousand, you're going to be surprised. It's like, okay, that's in the budget, but we're going to expend it or at least put the PO together now and will it be expended in the next fiscal year? But I'm asking, because of the dollar amount, I'm asking approval before I say yes to Dependable to go ahead and place that order for us. The only question I have, Mitch, was that forty thousand allocated for an update on Chromebooks? It is. It is. It is. Seems like it makes sense.
Yeah. Where are we at on the check we've already written?
We have, all it has been fulfilled.
It has, Sullivan?
Yes, I'm sorry if I didn't pass that one, I thought I did, but yeah. I have, if you're a MASH fan, I always remember the time they changed jobs in MASH and one guy was in charge of all the lunch trays. And they count, okay, here's fifty lunch trays, and it would go in the door and somebody would run around to the window and hand them back out, so they're counting the same lunch trays over and over again. Dependable went to our supplier that we ordered them from and said, hey, you cashed the district's check. You still owe them that they found a supply that was going somewhere else that they managed to somehow redirect in our direction and I am greatly indebted for them to do that. But yes, all of the Chromebooks we have ordered and paid for are in the district and being used.
So this will just be the next swap?
Yes.
Let me ask you this, you know, sometimes towards the end of the school year, you're anticipating maybe a little bit of a surplus and sometimes you buy things with that to kind of use the money up. This is something that you could not do that with, correct?
Correct. And the reason is they need that PO number now to get this order placed. The company will not place an order without it?
No, but even if you approved it now, and let's say we've got forty thousand dollar surplus before July one, you couldn't pay this bill before July one, could you? Because it's for next year, the supplier for next year.
Correct, yeah, that's, the auditors will come in and say, is this stuff in the building? Or did you use it this year? And the answer is no, then they would charge it to next year, which is what this is going to do anyways.
But you could say they would be in the building, but they're on back order till September one.
I could.
Which would be true.
And then it would be here, you know, locked down to a spike. No, but no, they look at those things and if something is purchased in this fiscal year, it has to be here and be used this fiscal year. To go back to that point, if we are at a budget surplus, maybe getting to that point in time, I already know what I would recommend we purchase. Okay, we might purchase some cabinetry down at the elementary school, we might purchase some bathroom fixtures down at the elementary, some of those things that are on that alternate bid sheet, that if there is budget money available, that we would, I would recommend that be designated for those kinds of purchases.
Okay. Having Chromebooks, this forty thousand dollars, it gets us.
It actually gets us a hundred and twenty-five with a four-year guarantee, fixed to replace it, no cost to the district, a protective case on top of it. I mean, it's about a three hundred and twenty-five dollar Chromebook.
So that includes insurance on the device?
In essence, yes. It's there, it's this company's warranty that if you get this Chromebook with this case, that warranty comes with it, so.
And there's no cost to the student's family for the insurance?
From what, from everything I was told, there's zero cost on anything that needs either fixed or replaced is what I was told by Dependable. And the reason so many, the MacBook leases, the MacBook lease is becoming done and we're switching out the MacBooks and the desire is to go back towards a Chromebook.
Okay, anybody like to make a motion?
All of whom, we approved the purchase order of forty thousand dollars worth of Chromebooks for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. It's forty thousand, six hundred and twenty-five. Should I just say additional Chromebooks? Okay. Get that, Angie?
Okay. Angie, second? Okay, motion and a second, any conversation? Call the question please, Angie.
Don?
Yes.
Heizner?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Capa?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bush?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes, motion passes.
On to number five, the proposal for high school English and math course offering changes.
As Mr. Austin, I'm forward to speak to proposal that has, I believe, come through the teachers? The first one that's coming around to you is the English one, we'll talk about that one first. I do have Miss Faber in the room as well, so she can help answer questions too. So one of the changes that we're looking at is trying to offer more courses for kids and give them a little bit more opportunities through English. With the addition of the third English teacher, we have a little more flexibility with schedules and stuff, so we're trying to kind of broaden our horizons. What will happen is students will take English nine, English ten. Those will be required classes for freshmen, sophomores. At that point, they would jump into, as a junior, they would take structure of the English language, real emphasis on some ACT stuff, some real structure stuff that they need to get. But at that point, after that class, they would be able to pick some of these other pathways to get through English and get credit. All right, now we go English nine, English ten, English eleven, English twelve, or CAP. So this would give us some different pathways, you would have some intermixes between juniors and seniors, but it would just give them some different options to take classes. So one structure of the English language, like I said, that'd be required. I'll come back to the media one that's on the first page there. We would have American literature and composition, which would kind of be the American Lit One focus, these would be semester-long classes, you get half credits, drama as literature, contemporary globe literature, professional communications, and then the CAP classes are on the back. Those are the ones that we already currently offer. So it's taking English eleven, communications, English eleven, college prep, English twelve, communications, and kind of breaking them up into some different classes. So kids can kind of pick and choose how they want to go through that process and not shut the door on a CAP if they wanted to take CAP at a later point. Or if they wanted to take CAP earlier, they could take CAP as a junior and make it through there as well. So it just kind of gives them some different options, something we wanted, we had been talking about for a couple of years here now, even before I was the building principal, that we talked about kind of moving towards that more option-based type of thing, like with science, you can go through chem, biophysics, bio, take some different options. Same sort of thing with the English curriculum that we're looking at. Were there any questions up to this?
Why would we not want to do this?
I have no idea. There's no reason not to do this. I completely agree.
I mean, these look like great classes.
So multimedia communications is a sophomore through senior class. We offer that, that's not really an English class, that produces our morning analysis, they learn more of the production stuff. The media one class you see here would be an elective English class they could take basically freshman or sophomore, but it does not replace English nine or English ten. It can't replace English nine or English ten, but it would be an elective English class that they could take, could count later on.
You have an expert back here.
You do.
I'm assuming covered in this social, or in media one, with social media, social media etiquette.
Yes, absolutely. And a lot of the kids have shown interest in the whole like video blogging and blogging and it's a way that we're able to, you know, still teach the basics of English and communication and the foundations of it, but it gives kids a different outlook, I guess. That's one thing I wanted to tell you guys, I totally, we met every Wednesday for two hours to work on this. And so it has been nice, like our entire morning has been meeting as an English staff and now our next staff would be, if this is something that you would approve, now we would start to figure out the different units that we would teach, you know, and it. The thing that I really like is actually Amanda Heizner is the one that really kind of got, started picking my brain. I mean, I've taught English for thirty years at five different high schools and she kind of said, she, it just kind of like lit a light bulb for me, it was so weird and I always tell her, I thank her so much for that. She's like, it's ridiculous, and we're a small high school, so we really didn't have a choice, but how we were just this one size fits all. And we expected all these kids to be like, no, this is what you get, like American Lit. There's some kids that American literature is not in their real house nor ever will be and they don't need it. So we were trying to explore options if they're still getting the English skills they need and especially if they decide, you can still go to a four-year college and not have American Lit. You don't have to take that, you know, I took it because I'm an English major, but the majority of college students really take that freshman comp and they're done. So that's where the one class, the structure of the English language was really what we thought we'd do for a semester. And obviously, every one of these classes will still pull in literature, you know, but the focus of that class will be the basics and the foundations and punctuation and hopefully everything you do there then will enhance the odds of taking, you know, up their ACT scores, which I think they really like. You know, they like it better when we're going through it bit by bit, you know, and they see it, you know, so it's not just like, oh, here's a week of prepare to take this test, you know, where they've been really studying for a semester almost, and it's not about the test, I don't mean that. I just am saying that the way that we'll organize it, it will help.
So to go back to your point, Dr. Dunno, why wouldn't we do this? We actually sat down, I think it was, this is a couple of Wednesdays back, I sat in there with him, went round and round and round and we couldn't come up with a, a reason. It moves us forward to offering kids more things. I know in the past couple of years, we've had kids that have taken every one of these classes. Yeah.
And then they can pick, you know, like the professional communications, you know, they can say, I don't need American Lit, but professional communications, absolutely. You know, so we're trying to keep the rigor, obviously, in each one of the different courses, but just meet the need of the individual students.
So two questions, first, current staffing, our current staffing can handle all of these courses?
Yeah.
Will there be multiple sections of any of these courses or will it depend on interest?
I think that's kind of what we're thinking right now, maybe one of these won't go, the kids are like, no, I'm not taking that.
It'll depend on interest, it'll be kind of like the other elective classes in that sense, you know, how many kids do you have sign up? If we have thirty-five signed up, we're going to have to run two sections of it. If we only have twenty-two signed up, well, we can run one section and get away. So really, the tough work will come back on the scheduling part of it.
Okay.
Because now we're adding different courses, right? So it's not just this class, but we're going to offer these, try to do our best to offer them, a lot of them both semesters and what we can do.
And I pardon for my ignorance here, but how are we helping students determine which of these courses is the best fit for their long-term, their life plan?
That's what we were trying to do with the explanation and actually here, through the media class, the multimedia, we are going to do like a video.
Class catalog.
Yeah.
So we will sign up for classes here in about three weeks to go jump on that. Right now, the media one class is going to start working on a video catalog for the different classes, so the teacher will kind of have like a, in biology, this is what we're looking at, if you're a sophomore, most sophomores take this and this is what we do. So something short and sweet that the kids can go on and look at it, because the descriptions, when you and I read through these, most kids will read the first word and just leave it alone there, yeah, okay. So and part of that will come back to guidance from the teachers, from Mr. Paulstone.
And our biggest goal as an English department was to make sure that every one of these courses, it will allow the student, maybe they think, oh, I'm not going to a four-year and you change your mind. And we don't want to take that away, so we're really making sure that each one of these will make sure that it's preparing the student if they decide, I'm going to get you through that English, freshman English comp class at college. But then the others will be, like if you notice the American Lit, that one is really, you know, that's the one that I've taught traditionally, but as you can see there, it says to introduce the students to higher level academic forms of writing that they would see in college, so really hit the research writing. That's the biggest question I get from students that have graduated that will email me and say, I know you taught this, but I can't remember, can you go through it again? And so we're trying to like really create courses where we can give the kids more that know they need more.
So no matter what academic plan they want, these classes would apply, if I'm going to Southwest Tech or MEPC, there's things that they can take from these classes that will help them be successful in any English program there, four-year degree, I'm going in the job market, I just need to write a little smaller document, a cover letter to somebody. Is there any other question about the English part? But I mean, that's kind of the brief overview of it. It's more, again, I don't see a bad reason to not to go into this. The addition of the additional staff member helps obviously us get some of these options out there.
Are you wanting to eliminate current offerings?
So the traditional ones, the traditional ones, so English eleven, English twelve would basically go there. And they would become these other classes. Now, there's bits and pieces from those other classes that would come back into this. One of the other options, and I think Mrs. Knowtham's on there as well. Ms. Knowtham, do you want to explain or you want me to start by reading what you gave me there?
You can go ahead, Matt, and then I'll just follow up with any questions.
So math department also looking at a smaller scale change here for options for students during their junior year. All students will continue to take algebra one and geometry, so algebra one is your freshman level class, geometry is your sophomore level class. The department would like to offer an alternative pathway for students during that, for that third course, so you need three credits of math or to graduate, which is suggested in the new release of the Wisconsin math standards, as was the case for the English standards. So they're suggesting in these new standards to open up more pathways to get that credit. So that's kind of the driving force behind this math change here. So at this time, they're intending to use a model of the course around the applied math curriculum from Southwest Tech. We do have kids that actually take that each year, a very good curriculum, it's very hands-on, with the final curriculum decisions being made when students are released this spring, so, or standards are released this spring. So the standards haven't been fully released, there's bits and pieces out there, but we're going to make final changes to this. The actual name of the class would be applications of algebra. So you would be offered, this is just basically to give kids more choices, right? It's going to give them more options. Right now, we would get rid of our advanced algebra class and these are the kids that are probably going to take this applications of algebra class. It doesn't shut the door on algebra two, right? They can come back their senior year and take algebra two, which is what most colleges want to see. So it doesn't shut that door, but it just kind of gives them an alternative pathway to get that credit. Did I miss something there, Ms. Knowtham?
No, that sounded great, Matt, and very similar to what Kristen was saying, a lot of this, again, just around being able to meet the needs of our students and feeling like our current traditional pathway isn't necessarily doing that for all of them. And when we sat down, very similar conversation went round and round, why wouldn't we do this? We also couldn't find. We also couldn't find any reasons why not. So it's definitely our recommendation to put this into the curriculum. Even though the standards are still forthcoming this spring, we still believe as a department that will give us enough time for curriculum work over the summer to get it in place and ready to roll for the fall.
I think it's a great idea. I mean, I love the idea of having a math class that's more applicable to life and work, you know? Like actually, because algebra can feel so abstract, you know? And to use financial, banking, credit examples, you know, statistics, probability, in real-life examples, I think are really great skills. And go ahead.
No, so again, with this, with this applications, they could go into algebra two as a senior. They could go to stats as a senior. They could do the college math prep. So it doesn't shut the door on anything. It just kind of gives them another avenue, right? And that's what we're looking for, more opportunities for our kids.
I will entertain a motion to approve the proposals.
I move that we approve both the proposal around the English and math course offerings.
I will second it.
Is there any more discussion on that?
Any financial obligation?
No, this is with current staff.
Okay. Would there be any resource materials for, that you think of either for the applications?
That'd be a question that I'd have to ask Ms. Knopf.
Yeah, that's a great question. So the students that we've had take the course as an independent study previously, where it was just the applied math curriculum that they were working through. All of the materials are currently accessible through Southwest Tech, and it's just an open website. So in the past, with the small groups of students, we have been able to just, you know, utilize those materials without having to purchase the textbooks. It would be a very small cost, if any, if we decided to actually purchase the textbooks. It's not something I would really worry about at all.
I've had a couple of parents ask me over the years, Kristen, they thought that our school was lacking in critical writing college level. This this CAP college rating.
That's a college.
Yes. That's the class, the CAP class, they get the, if they get a B. I think it is a B plus, they get a product.
Is it? Okay. Yep, so that's your UW Oshkosh. Mr. Smith teaches that right now. At a certain grade. Yes.
But I don't mind that, for example, Isaac took, Mr. Smith, that's the first year Mr. Smith taught that last year. And Isaac took it, and that covered his UNLV English freshman, so he's done now. And he finished it back at Mineral Point, so that was kind of nice.
Okay.
Plus, but then if you look at the American Lit, that's the way we kind of tried to restructure it. The American Lit one is going to be an introduction to that type of writing that they'll see in college as well. And I guess that was my concern because with my kids both side just finishing college in Sydney as a senior, their friends would always email me and I'm like, oh my gosh, I'm gonna do a better job of, you know, making sure they're really ready. And I think that helped me and can see that we'll be able to focus more.
Well, it's good, it's good to hear that either. Thank you.
Any more questions or comments on this? I think it's great, by the way.
Parents looking at small districts, you know, that's one of their main concerns is, are kids not gonna have enough options, you know, to take classes, you know, that would be a larger district with no trouble offering. And the more we can diversify our, you know, class options while still maintaining the four classes, I think the better. Better we are.
That's great, that's great, it really is. Angie, call the question, please.
Heizer?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bush?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Chamber.
Yes.
Thank you, guys. I appreciate that.
Thank you, man.
It's nice to have this on the agenda and talk about it. And I can talk about this stuff every month. Let's keep it going, right?
So five more new classes by the meeting?
Get the word out.
I'm gonna go home and work on that.
I had a math class, something like this, that I took this in June, and I don't remember what it was called. Actually, kind of fun, I hate to say it. Well, it kind of was. It is because Pat Murky taught it.
All right, on to business services, credit card statement of activity. And the bill's payable. I will entertain a motion to approve both or single or whichever you choose.
I'll make a motion to approve both.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Is there any questions on? Heather one?
Right here?
No questions? No? Okay, we'll call the question, please, Angie.
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Heizer?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Caput?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Chamber.
Yes.
Would anybody like to make a motion to go into closed session to discuss a district employee?
Motion.
Second.
It has got one question.
Yes.
In the past, Mitch, we have taken minutes or recorded closed session of a sort. We can, you can take minutes for us.
I take minutes, yeah. You've not, I've not been involved in any closed sessions that have been recorded. But there are notes that are taken.
So if a board member thinks something is important, they'll ask you to write it down. And that would become part of the official minutes then.
Sure.
Perfect, yeah, okay. I'll call the question to go to closed session, please.
Don?
Yes.
Heizer?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Caput?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bush?
Yes.
Chamber.
Yes.
Mitch, you'll send me a new meeting and number and password and all that?
Yes, I'll send that to you right now, Doctor.
Okay, thanks.
Mitch, we don't have an option that somebody's gonna you do not have to put that in the whole okay.